I'm going to call the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 2019 to order. Can we have roll call, please?
We have 10 present and 2 absent.
Let the record show that Commissioners Shea and Anderson are excused this evening. Commissioner McDonough, would you lead us into prayer and pledge, please?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for public comment on any items on the consent agenda. Ed?
I'm coming. Ritter Bandarob, 2601 Grand Avenue. Section 4 Judiciary Committee Ordinance and Resolutions referred to Judiciary, Council Ordinance 19-3, amending sidewalk maintenance, snow removal. Council Bill 19-13 and Ordinance 19-13 states the Community Enrichment Department or the designated representative of the city-county. I do hope that means the parking commission, parking officers, will be given authority to issue snow removal citations so we do not have duplicate code enforcement patrols covering the same area. Also, I hope there will be a special citation for those who move the snow to the end of the sidewalk and leave it piled in the handicapped ramps. Reference item 13, Communication 19-546. Intersection at Amherst and Harrison. While you're working on this, please get the eastbound lanes coming out of Ace arrows painted soonest before we have an accident. Also, please consider hanging lane signs on the traffic lights. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on any item on the consent agenda? See, none. We'll move for the approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 6th, 2019. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of November 6th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 6th, 2019 meeting. Is there anything on the question? Everyone, please vote. Anyone wishing to change their vote? The court, please record the vote.
We have 10 yea and 10 nay.
Motion carries. We do not have any items not addressed on the agenda this evening. Under the Chief Executive's report, we're still waiting on the federal government to release the documents for the super fund consent decree. So there's nothing new to report on that at this time. Want to remind everyone that the meeting next week will be on Tuesday instead of Wednesday because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So the deadline for communications for the following week will be that Wednesday instead of Friday. Next, under Section 1 Bit Openings, Public Hearings and/or Presentations, we have a presentation, Communication Number 19-482. Ed Randall, Community Enrichment Department Director, requesting Council of Commissioners permission for a presentation on October 16th, 2019, meeting to present an update on the Butte Silver Bow Community Enrichment Department. That did get moved from October 16th until tonight. So Ed, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Council members, for the record, my name is Ed Randall, and I'm the Director of the Community Enrichment Department for Butte Silver Bow. I brought two of our leaders to the meeting tonight. They haven't spent a lot of time up here, and we wanted to introduce them to you folks. So I'm not going to take a lot of your time. I just wanted to first thank the council for all the support we've gotten this last year, for the budget, for everything that we've asked for. I know it gets contentious at times, but I do respect you folks and I appreciate and respect your status as Commissioners and all the other department heads we work for. I thank them all. Without this big team we have, no one would be successful. And so I thank everyone. Just real quick, I'm not going to throw a lot of numbers at you. The performance budgets are out. If you want to look at any of our statistics, you can surely look at that. That'll kind of answer anything where we stand, how we did as far as what we were supposed to be doing. And I can tell you that we exceeded most of our goals or met them. So we've been busy up here the last year. We've revised several ordinances. We have one before you folks now. It's at judiciary, and it's the sidewalk snow removal, as Mr. Bandarob just discussed. So we'll be discussing that next Tuesday, I believe. So Zane Gleason and Cindy Winston are here with me. Zane will be, both will be at judiciary next week, and Zane will be in charge of that snow removal program. So we were working on a mothball ordinance earlier in the year. The Chief Executive asked us to hold off on that, and he has another department or program writing the mothball ordinance. I wanted to talk just real quickly about the vacant building ordinance. We had some discussion with a couple Commissioners, and since then, we've sent out over 300 letters to properties. And after we kind of got into the mothball ordinance, we asked our staff to go back and identify those 300 households and determine if they are properly or improperly mothballed so that we will be able to share that information. So we're not doing work twice. We're just kind of looking at different ways or different ways to do things. So we're doing that. We will be introducing some different ordinances throughout the year, just some cleanup and some revisions of the animal services ordinance. Again, we work with all departments. We're not a department, as you folks are aware, that does big projects. We don't have 5 and 10 and $20 million projects. We do the little things that we feel are very important to keep our city running. So we don't have any big-ticket items that we would like to share. We did complete a tree inventory this year. So we're very proud of that. All of our staff is cross-trained, as you're aware. They can all do a little bit of everything. We're a very transparent department. Everything we do is in the media. We spend some time with Mr. Mike Smith here, and we're on the radio. These two folks here, Zane and Cindy, have been on the radio, the news, in the newspaper, discussing the new sidewalk snow removal ordinance that we hope that you guys will support. We think it's going to be great for Butte. We think that we can enforce it. We've been doing the work with Mr. Nary, Director Nary from Public Works, the last year, year and a half. So we're pretty comfortable with where we're at. Other than that, I know that you guys have a busy agenda. Again, not a lot of statistics or numbers, but we're here to answer any questions. We thank you for your support. We hope to have a great year. And so I will answer, or our staff, some of our leadership team will answer any questions that you folks have. Please contact us for any of your needs. I hope that we're responding to your needs, and we're here to listen. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, members of council.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Any members of the council have any questions for Ed or his staff? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. More of a comment, more than anything. Thank you for what you guys do. You guys have helped me out in District 3 on numerous issues. The one question that I have, Ed, is whenever I have a problem, I send you an email.
Right.
And report it. Is that the best way for us to get that information out to you guys?
Mr. Chief Executive, Chairman Morgan, council members, yeah, you know, we have a lot of staff. It's easier for us to prioritize and ensure that they're getting done if an email goes to myself or John Mudry or Cindy Winston, Zane, something like that. If you're sending them to everywhere or different departments, it's hard to keep tracking. As you're aware, we're, you know, we have a performance budget, and we're driven by numbers. You know, we try to ensure that we save every email and we document every phone call and steps that were taken, whether we can do something or not. Everything is categorized and everything is saved. So that is the best way to contact us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I just want to add one thing. I think the department is doing a great job. And, you know, some things, you might call their department, and it might seem like nothing is getting done, but they have files on every call they get, and there's a lot of documentation that goes onto it, a lot of research. They can't just go barge into a house and tell the person to clean it up. They have to send notices. So it does take a little bit of time before you see action. A lot of times, it's simple, a knock on the door and a simple discussion with 90% of the people, and they'll abide by what they're asking. But there's that 10% that are the troublemakers that you have to do the legal process, and it just takes time. But they are doing an excellent job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The only other thing I think that we forgot to say is we are, we're starting to use some new technology. We're using drones. And so we'll be sending you some information on that, but it's really helped us. It's really supported what we're trying to do as far as dangerous and vacant buildings. So we're really excited about that. We'll be able to show some video shortly, and we'll be sending it out to you folks. So if there's any other questions, we'd be glad to answer anything.
Any further questions from the council? Okay, well, thanks. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to jump down to Section 3, the communications to be read and acted upon. It's about another presentation, so we'll get that out of the way, and it's Communication Number 19-535. Mary McCormick, Butte Silver Bow Historic Preservation Officer, requesting Council of Commissioners to allow time on the November 20th, 2019 agenda to make a presentation of Butte Silver Bow's historic preservation program. Mary, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, council, for allowing me this opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Mary McCormick, and I'm the Historic Preservation Officer. And I've been in that position for about four years now, and I realize I've never come before you to speak about some of the activities that I'm involved with. I have come for other nefarious things. So I'm really looking forward to take some time tonight to let you know about our historic preservation program. And I'm going to try to keep it to 10 minutes. If I start talking too long, I'll whip through these slides quickly. Let's see. So first of all, it's really important for us to realize that Butte is part of a National Historic Landmark District. And if you look on the left there, that's a map. I know it's not probably real clear for you to see, but it's a map of our landmark district. And you can tell the Berkeley Pit there. It's essentially almost everything north of Front Street exclusive of McKeon Heights. And we are, this district, which includes the community of Anaconda and the BNP Railroad as well, is the largest historic landmark district in the country. And that's quite a distinction. And being a landmark is a big distinction. It means that we are, have significance at the national level. Butte itself, just the commercial core, was designated a landmark in 1961. We were one of the first landmarks designated in the country. And that was led, pushed, spearheaded by local efforts led by Anna Cody, who then owned the Copper King Mansion. And she and others were in fear that the pit was going to come and eat away the uptown. And so they asked the Secretary of Interior to designate Butte as a landmark, and they complied. In the next, over the next several years, there was lots of local efforts to better document our landmark district. The Butte Historical Society sponsored a survey where they went out and looked at all the individual buildings in this area and decided which ones dated to the Butte's historic period, which ones still retain their integrity from when they were constructed. And those things are what we call contributing resources to the landmark district. And then other buildings that were modern or have been so remodeled that they couldn't recall their historic associations, and they were deemed non-contributing. Then Ellen Crane really, through a lot of perseverance and dedication, worked really hard to really quantify this landmark district. And she spearheaded a movement that nominated the Butte-Anaconda National Historic Landmark District as we know it today, which, as I said, includes the community of Anaconda, the BNP railroad corridor, which linked the Mines of Butte with the smelter city of Anaconda, Waukerville, and the uptown, and all kinds of other neighborhoods. And this landmark district was recognized as a national landmark because of its Butte's contribution to the industrialization of the United States in the early, in the late 19th and early 20th century. The copper and other metals that came out of Butte is what helped our country industrialize, especially copper that was used to carry the electricity. We were also recognized a landmark because Butte is the Gibraltar of unionism. Unions were born in Butte, and Butte is where the working person got an eight-hour day, a decent wage, and safe working conditions. So I think that's something that we all can really be proud about. And that Butte-Anaconda designation occurred in 2006. Oops, wrong way, and I dropped my paper here. Excuse me. I'm going to duck. So another thing that makes Butte so special is the big concentration that we have of late 19th and early 20th century buildings, especially in our commercial district. You know, Butte was extremely wealthy at this time, and people built a lot of innovative buildings, high style. They used architects. They used good materials. We've certainly lost a lot, but there's still a lot today. And I've talked to architects that have told me that they think that Butte's concentration of commercial, historic commercial buildings is the largest that there is in the nation. You can see, these are some of our landmark buildings that are still in the uptown today, and they are beautiful pieces of architecture. And another thing for Butte to be very proud of. We also have great residential neighborhoods. You can see up there some of our mansions, but Butte is also known for its little workers' cottages. And these tell a really, really important story about Butte as well. So my job, I am ruled, I shouldn't say ruled, but I do my position according to an ordinance, the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Butte Silver Bow passed an ordinance in, first in 19, you can tell I'm a historian, 1983. That's when we became a certified local government with a Montana shipo office. We hired our first Historic Preservation Officer, and we set up a Historic Preservation Commission. And that commission is one of Butte's volunteer boards, and they guide the Historic Preservation Officer in implementing the ordinance. That ordinance was later revised in 2007. That came on the heels of Butte being on the National Trust's 10 Most Endangered List of Historic Properties in the country for years of uninvited demolitions. We also, our CLG status with the State Historic Preservation Office was in suspension. So we revised our ordinance. That was tweaked a little bit in 2014, and the new ordinance, revised ordinance passed in 2014, and that's what we operate with today. That ordinance has three major programs, a local register program, a demolition review program, and a design review program. The local register program, we really haven't done much with that. It states that if a property owner wants to have their property listed in a local register, that they have to write the Historic Preservation Commission and request that designation. If they do that, they get something put on their deed that follows in perpetuity, and it requires them, if they're going to make any changes to the exterior facade, to come to the Historic Preservation Commission and do design review. So our next big program is the demolition review program. I'm not going to sit here and provide you statistics either tonight. I have a lot of them, and I could give you them, but, you know, it's a big part of my job. The demolition review program requires that if someone is going to get, goes for a demolition permit, that permit has to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. This program was set up long before I came. Lori Casey with planning, Mike Nation with building codes, and their administrative assistants, Carol Laird and Roxy Larson, you know, already had a really good setup developed, and they worked very closely with me on this. They send me something over, and I check first to see if it's a historic property. I can do that easily if it's in the landmark district because I have a list. But our ordinance applies countywide. I have to look at things that are outside the landmark district as well. And so there may be somebody that wants to demolish a house, say, down on the flats, and then I have to do the work to decide if it's eligible for the National Register. We have come to some agreements. I don't take demolition of secondary buildings like sheds or garages to the HPC. I can sign off on those, so that kind of streamlines that. You know, I've just put in a couple demolitions that we've approved. A lot of people say that, you know, the Preservation Commission wants to save everything, and I can tell you, and you should know, that we have approved, they have approved, far more demolition permits than we've ever denied. I mean, and that's not necessarily something I'm proud of, but that's a fact. Seven West Wallman was a demolition permit that was approved. That's the building over there on the left. It had a wood upper story. You can see a picture. The roof was in decay, and because it was wood, it was collapsing in. It was also, the lower story was brick veneer, and those brick veneer walls were coming down. And so the HPC approved that demolition. There's another example of the demolition that the HPC approved, 805 North Main. The roof was essentially gone. But even more than that, the brick veneer was falling off the walls. It wasn't a masonry building, so it was structurally unsound. So they approved that as well. But I just wanted to talk about another demolition review process that we recently went through, and that, 104 Iowa. Actually, 104 and 102 Iowa, or 1004 and 1002 Iowa were twin little workers' cottages, shotguns. 1002 experienced a fire, and it was condemned by the fire marshal, or I can't remember if the fire marshal, the fire chief, and he evoked what is called the safety exclusion of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. So he evoked that so that it was in such bad condition that he could do that, and he could say, we need to demolish this now. We're not, I mean, we bypassed the Historic Preservation Commission. And the building code official, the fire department, and the health department has the authority to evoke that. But then we had 1004 still left. It's a little twin. That's the green one on the top. The city thought about demolishing that as well. The Historic Preservation Commission went and took a look at the building. And one thing I can say for sure is that I have a wonderful commission. There's people on that commission that do a lot of rehabilitation work. They know historic buildings. And so we took a look at the building, and we saw that it was structurally sound, had a really good foundation, new sewer, new water lines coming in. We have a realtor on our board, and he was like, this house is perfect for rehabilitation. There is a huge demand in Butte right now for small, single-story houses. So the Chief Executive said it could go back, on the tax rolls, it was a tax deed property. It could go back to tax auction. And it sold last September. I think they paid the back taxes at $7,300. I went down there. I think the, they paid the back taxes at $7,300. I went down there today and took a picture. The gentleman that bought it has painted it. Gray is not my favorite color, but at least it's painted now. He's painted the windows, secured them. He is putting a new roof on. He's done a lot of manicuring of the lawn, so this is a real success. In the process, the chief executive allowed members of the Historic Preservation Commission to go out and clean the property, and you can see all the trash that was in there, and we cleaned it out. So that's a demolition success, or a non-demolition success. The other program that we call, have is our design review program. And that program is specifically tied to when somebody gets a local incentive to do work on a historic building or for new construction in the landmark district. And there's three types of incentives. There's URA grants, there's East Butte, I'm never, I'm not going to say it right, redevelopment and revitalization grants, and SARDA grants. And that's the only time that we do design review, except if it's a condition of a demolition permit. That, we can, we can do it under those circumstances. You know, this has been the best part of my job. I work closely with Karen Burns in community development, and her project manager, Brienne Downey, and they have been so wonderful to work with. They get the applications in for grants, they put it all together, and then they give me my part, and they let me do my part, and it's been very successful. We only look at exterior improvements. I only look at facade improvements. And what I'm trying to do is to make sure that the money, taxpayer money that's being spent is not going to compromise the architectural integrity of these buildings. And so there's a couple of examples. The house at 319 North Montana, I'm sure if you look up on the left, you've recognized that. It had a brick veneer that was falling down. That property was purchased by the Whacker Bars, a very industrious couple here. They are doing a major rehabilitation on it. They hired a mason to relay that brick. It's all done. They put, raised the building and got the foundation stabilized. Right now, they're putting new windows in, and it's going to be a showpiece when it's done. Just another quick thing is 301 West Park, the Lowly Mansion, I shouldn't say that. Anyway, it was painted, and they did a lot of repair on the woodwork as well. So those are two real visual success stories in the uptown. Of course, there's been lots of URA grants given lately for businesses in the uptown. We really are having a renaissance. There's people coming in. We hear from people weekly interested in what's going on in Butte. We are now, as you know, an opportunity zone, the uptown is, which is allows investors to invest, invest capital gains in improvement projects. They're very interested in the uptown because they can combine that with federal tax incentives and, and URA grants. And the URA, I just put in that picture of North Main. I think every building that you see has gotten a URA grant lately to do work on their building exterior, and many of them interior, things that I don't comment on, like new plumbing, new electrical, and new heating systems. So it's, it's just a really wonderful program. And Karen and Brienne are very, very busy. So another thing, we do signs, and you can see, there was the Butte Academy sign. It was an LED sign that was put up several years ago and caused a lot of grief, and now it's been redone. And we have the master sign maker in Butte on our commission, Mr. Weitzel, and he designed that sign. And I think everyone is very pleased to not have that flashing light in their neighborhood anymore. The East Butte RRA is, you know, that part of East Butte, east on Park, granite, mercury, that is closer to the pit, who was once, big neighborhoods filled with homes and commercial businesses. And a lot of that got demolished in the 70s when Anaconda was thinking about expanding the Berkeley Pit. There's a few ragtag houses left up there, but there's also a lot of great space that is just really primed for commercial development. Here's a couple of your URA project, I mean, East Butte RRA projects that you might have seen that have done wonderful rehabilitation work. In the East Butte RRA, we also have new construction. This is a proposed, a building proposed for construction by MarCom. They're a laboratory here in Butte. They're currently housed in the old grocery store at Excelsior and Platinum. They've been working close with me, with me on the design of this new building. This new building will be on the lot between the Broadway Cafe and the Broadway Garage. They're going to use brick on the exterior, which is really compatible with our landmark district. There's been some changes. Those long windows you see over on this side instead are going to be paired double hungs. But I think it's going to be a beautiful infill construction that's really going to enhance that area. The East Butte RRA has also helped out with the Sewell's Window Project. I also got a grant from the Montana History Foundation to restore this prism and stained glass window. If you all drove down East Park, you would have seen it before. It was installed in 1916. It's a beautiful window, but it was falling apart. And the owner agreed to allow us to clean it up, re-solder it, and he's going to reinstall it. It was a wonderful project. Butte CPR contributed and was my partner in this project. They, they made a sizable donation, and they also corralled all the volunteers. Lee Whitney, their administrative assistant, did that. We had, you know, over 15 people work on this project. We had a master artist, stained glass artisan from Great Falls, come down, and he trained people. And that was one of the best things out of us. We had restoration contractors working on this project that have now learned how to do this skill. But it was also, I think, you know, a lot of fun. A lot of people just really enjoyed working on this project. So we're very excited to see it go back up. SARDA has also provided grants for the Whacker Bars to restore this, this multiplex at 3 West Agate. It was built in 1898. In the early 20th century, it served as a, as a hospital. It was in dire condition, filled with junk. The roof was bad, all kinds of horrible things. But they bought it, and they've restored it. And it's beautiful. And it's beautiful inside and out. They have a couple more projects that they're working on as well. So there are people that have capital gains that they can invest back into our community, and they're excited to do that. SARDA grant, just real quick, we also got a SARDA grant to do the Jacobs House. There's a picture of it, how it looked originally in 1910. I really believe that it's the oldest house in Butte, and I believe it was one of, if not the first house, brick house ever built in Butte. It was home to Butte's first mayor, Henry Jacobs. In the 20s, it was stuccoed, and they put a craftsman-style porch on it. That porch was in terrible disarray, and so SARDA helped Butte Silver Bow out in redoing the porch and kind of recapturing its original folk-Vittorian architectural character and painting it a more appropriate color. The Root &amp; Bloom is working on taking this building over. They are, have painted the inside. They've gotten all kinds of furniture donations, and hopefully soon, they will be coming to you to get a lease on the building, and they want to operate it as a community center and as a place for artists and residents to stay. And last but not least, and I'm sorry I talked so long, I just wanted to show you one of the latest projects we've been working on, and that is Town Pump's proposed new facility at Montana and Platinum. Now that, they want to build a big new building, and they want to put it on a lot where there's five contributing buildings. And they've worked really closely with the Historic Preservation Commission on, on trying to sell and relocate those houses. I mean, it's really been a joint effort between planning. Planning set down some really good requirements so that if something was going to be relocated, it would get on a solid foundation and get hooked up to utilities, so it wasn't just sitting out there on blocks. Dory Skookaroo'd really hard at finding some Butte Silver Bow property that we could deed over to people that wanted to move properties. And so three of the five and three of the best buildings have, are either been moved or scheduled to be moved. That's a real success story. So anyway, the HPC was amenable to working with the Town Pump on the design of their building. They used their, their architect firms out of Helena, but a local guy, Colin Pullman, who grew up in Butte and worked in Butte as an architect for a while, did the design. And it's a big building, but I think they really captured a really, a lot of important things in Butte. It's going to be brick. They're using copper metal, copper-colored metal paneling on the transom and the spandrels. They're having black lintels over the windows, and the storefronts are going to be that dark bronze, and the window patterns are going to be correct. So I think it'll, it'll turn out to be quite a nice addition to that busy corridor. This isn't something I would ever think that should go in the middle of our historic district, but we're kind of down on the fringe there in this part of Montana Street that's, that's seen a lot of changes. So this is your first glimpse at some of those. They're putting brick on the, in the fuel station as well. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm sorry I talked for so long, but next, I'll come next year, and I won't talk so long.
Thank you. Any questions for Mary from the council?
No questions, just a comment. I talked to Mary about this, I don't know, a few months ago. I said, you know, we have four new council members, and I've worked with Mary for many years, even before she came to the county. I worked with her on historic projects. And I thought it would be a great idea for her to come before us and explain her department. She also works very closely with other departments. I wanted to mention that as well, between community enrichment, planning, anybody that has anything to do, I mean, I'm sure even Mark Neary, you know, with Public Works, just everybody that has anything to do with, with buildings. And I think she does a great job. Sometimes thankless, you can never make everyone happy, but yeah, it's so important to preserve our treasures, and that's what Mary strives to do. So thank you, Mary, for your presentation.
Commissioner Callahan.
I just want to say the same to Mary. I appreciate all the work you do, Karen and Dory, and everybody that works with you. And without people like you, we would lose a lot of this stuff, and these buildings would never be the way they are. And keep up the good work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we note Communication 19-535 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to note Communication 19-535 and place it on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote?
Can I bring Brandon?
Sure, go ahead. I'm sure he's all in favor.
He can change his vote when he comes back.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
There are ten yea and zero nay.
Motion carries. And next, we'll go to the consent agenda, A. 1 through 4, and B. Communications 1 through 14. Do we have any segregations or friendly amendments? Seeing none, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd make a motion that we concur with Section 2, the consent agenda, A. Committee reports 1 through 4, B. Communications 1 through 14, with no exclusions.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, A. 1 through 4 and B. 1 through 14. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
We have ten yea and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we will go into Section 4, ordinances and resolutions referred to judiciary. Number 1, Council Ordinance Number 19-13. 2, Ordinance Number 19-14. And Section 5, ordinances and resolutions, final reading. Number 1, Council Bill 19-12, Ordinance 19-12. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Bill 19-12, Ordinance Number 19-12. An ordinance establishing the Butte Silver Bow Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal Area, creating the Butte Silver Bow Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal District, and adopting the Butte Silver Bow Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal Plan with tax increment financing provision pursuant to Title VII, Chapter 15, Part 42 and 43 of the Montana Code annotated, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council, or Council Bill Number 19-12, Ordinance 19-12, on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Bill 19-12, Ordinance Number 19-12, on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
There are ten yea and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, I'd like to call your attention to public comment. Getting ahead of myself here. I'm in a hurry to get home. Now's the time for any public comment on any public matter, not on the agenda. Seeing none, call your attention to the calendar of other meetings and events. And Commissioner Morgan.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. An agreeable sort this evening.